accommodate everybody that's here. So unofficially, we're going to take the public comments today because of the lack of the interpreter presently. We want to hear what people have to say. So once again, I'm just going to read through this so we'll all know what the rules are. The Board is holding in person public comments at today's meeting. In order to speak, individuals were required to sign up through the website in advance at the meeting. We are allowing time for 10 speakers, and it's my understanding that we had six individuals sign up. Anyone who was unable to obtain a time slot to speak in person was given the opportunity to submit written comments through the website. Mr. Laniers will be calling the name of the speakers, who will be allowed a maximum of three minutes each to address the Board. Mr. Laniers, will you please call the first speaker?
Ms. Anderson, you may begin.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Could you speak up just a little bit, please?
Hello, can everyone? Oh, here it is. Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and Board, for having us here today. I want to speak on behalf of the public engagement. So I wanted to say, we do appreciate you taking the time to have us come in and listen to us in person. And I wanted to also speak about the open houses and the attempts at public engagement. We do like the opportunities to speak in public and be able to share our comments and give you feedback on items that you have presented to us that are working and give feedback on the items that are not. So I would like to say that I do like the open houses that you have had. I participated in the April open house. I did it virtually. The May open house, I thought, was a good setup for most people. I liked the way that it was presented in various locations, giving people in the city an opportunity to get to the various locations in person. And there was a North County site set up. So those were good. The problem, or what I think could be worked on, would be having the locations being more having the locations be more accessible to the visually impaired and other disabled community members. Some of the locations, such as the Cherokee location, was not completely—
There's one minute remaining, sorry.
—was not completely accessible. And some people have trouble with long distances. The parking was an issue. And also, once you get into the site, being able to navigate to where the members of Metro were set up to speak to us. The communication of the open houses, we would like to see that there be a recording added to your phone line for reservations to let people know about the meetings. And also, if you could have cards or mailers mailed out to people to inform them of the meetings. There are stakeholder emails, but those who are not don't have access to email may have missed those. Also, if you could do some communications through the media, news, and/or radio, that would be great also, to just get the awareness out about the dates and the times and the locations. What I thought also was good about the communication was that you provided the bus routes and the bus numbers that would take you to those locations. That was good. I did notice that was on the website, and I don't know that that was in the stakeholder letter. For those people who are not always checking the website, it would just be good to have that mailed out.
Okay. Thank you. Time has expired.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker would be Diane Cummins.
It's me.
No, you. After you, sorry.
Got it. I was going to go sit back down.
My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Board and Mr. Roach. It's great to be here in person. We've been asking for these meetings to be in person for over a year now, so we're glad to see this happen. We know that people with disabilities desperately need public transit to work. We do have a higher poverty rate than the general population, and many of us do want employment and need transportation to work for us. And many employers need workers, so there's a win-win situation here if we can get it all to come together. There's also bad health outcomes when people live isolated lives, so it will save us all money on healthcare if we can make sure that folks can get where they need to go and engage with friends and family and especially see their healthcare providers on a regular basis. We see that Metro is really making an effort, and we appreciate that. On the June report card from the St. Louis Metropolitan Alliance for Reliable Transit, or SMART for short, you did have an improvement in the grade for meaningful engagement with people with disabilities, moving from a D in March to a C in June. And a lot of that's about the stakeholder letters, the Community Connect meetings, and hearing our voices when you had that one-day reservation thing that you proposed. And so many of us did not want that to happen, and you went to a three-day period, and we appreciate that. At the same time, sometimes Metro doesn't show great instincts around being welcoming, and in particular, not allowing people to speak originally in that April 11th virtual meeting was the wrong instincts. And your House rules for today sounded a little finger-waggy, so I have a rewrite of that that is a little more welcoming. What if you had said, "At Bi-State Development, we know that Metro cannot exist without its riders, and that transportation that is accessible, affordable, safe, and reliable is vital for the sake of our region. We need each other, and we look forward to direct engagement with our customer base. We have the greatest respect for our customers, and will demonstrate that respect in how we address you. We ask for similar respect." Due to the volume of work at each Board meeting, we can only allocate 30 minutes for public comments. Members of the public may register, and we could offer several ways to do that that accommodate people that don't have internet access. No speaker may talk for more than three minutes. By speaking for less than three minutes, you make it possible for more voices to be heard, and we're anxious to hear from as many people as possible. Throughout the meeting, the Board Chair will recognize each person who's to speak, whether another Commissioner, a Metro employee, or a member of the public. Bi-State also welcomes written comments which can be submitted online—
Thirty seconds remaining.
—until one hour before the start of each meeting. Thank you for caring enough about the success of Metro Transit to share feedback, ideas, and questions with us. So we think that that could have been phrased in a more welcoming way, and I provided that to you in writing in case you would want to adopt some of those suggestions. So thank you for the chance to be here.
Fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Diane Cummins is speaking next, and after her will be Robin Wallen.
I'm going to be speaking on the new phone system, which started out to be really great, but then it's gotten to the point where when you press the numbers to make a reservation, it keeps the message keeps on going, and people are getting very frustrated. When the phone system was changed, I know that on Fridays, dialing for 200, 200 times was very normal. I mean, that was a good day, and it was 200. But now that when the buttons aren't working, that's really frustrating people and making them feel like the system is going backwards. Amy did share with us phone numbers to call for when the system first started that would help you get to reservations. And I know that a lot of people are going back and calling those numbers, and I don't know that they are supposed to. I would like to be advised on what we can do. Amy did give us a special way to get around it. I don't totally remember what she said, but that was at the ADA Task Force meeting. So I would like that her to advise us again. And I think that things are going pretty well. I appreciate the extra phone numbers to try to get this whole thing rolling. And thank you very much for this session and letting us talk. Thank you.
Fine. Thank you. And I'd just like to let everyone know that we do have our interpreter onboard with us now, so we appreciate that.
Next up will be Robin Wallen, followed by Barbara Scheinbein.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I want to share some information with you. I've actually shared this with some of the ADA staff, so some of this they know already. But to be totally transparent, I just want to share some experiences. I'm here today to speak about ensuring the safety of paratransit riders. I relied on Call-A-Ride to visit my partner for two weeks recently, something I had not done in a while. During this time, I witnessed several concerning issues that compromised rider safety. Firstly, many of the new vans have malfunctioning retractable seat belts. Some would retract, many would not. A non-functioning seat belt is a safety hazard. At least once, I almost ended up on the floor. Luckily, I have the body strength to hold myself in the seat. Secondly, the new vans have very steep ramps that prevent a significant fall risk to passengers without good balance or using walkers or crutches. Drivers sometimes leave wheelchair tie-downs in the floor, creating tripping hazards inside the van. Unfortunately, some drivers prioritize speed over safety. This puts everyone on the road at risk. Finally, the age and condition of older vans raise serious concerns. Many are well past their prime, accumulating excessive mileage, which raises the risk of breakdowns and potential accidents. Sometimes drivers are told to keep driving, even when the vans have problems. I overheard radio communication where a driver reported a loose wheel, only to be instructed to finish his route before returning to the shop. On more than one occasion, I had been on vans where drivers have had trouble with the van losing power, and drivers were told to continue speaking, driving, putting passengers and the drivers at risk, as well as other drivers on the road. Bi-State Development has a responsibility to ensure the well-being of all paratransit riders. It is important to invest in a modern fleet specifically designed to accommodate a wider range of disabilities instead of buying more of the same vans. Features like functioning seat belts, properly designed ramps are important. The vans must be rigorously maintained and regularly inspected. Drivers should never be told to continue to drive a malfunctioning van. Driver safety protocols need to be reviewed, and repairs prioritized over completing routes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Barbara Scheinbein, followed by Elton Thomas.
That's the microphone. Okay. Right here. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Good morning. My name's Barbara Scheinbein. I am a member of SMART, and I'm going to be talking about the vehicle routing software for Call-A-Ride. This may be the heart of the Call-A-Ride system. There's a lot of reasons why this is very important, and I know that the current software is really out of date, and it's very disappointing to hear that it has been neglected for so long. Why this is important and why new software, updated software, is so important? It creates more efficient rides, which means our commute would be smaller, and it also would increase capacity. More efficiencies should result in more rides, even with the current amount of Call-A-Ride operators we have. Fewer last-minute route changes for the drivers should have modern features. That's one of the things we're really looking for, like vehicle tracking, so we can see when the vehicle's coming. Another modern feature would be alerts from Metro telling us when our vehicle is ready to come, maybe 10-minute alert. All this would result in both less stress for both the riders and the drivers. We are concerned about how long this new software for the vehicle routing is proposed to take. It's supposed to not get implemented till the end of this year or beginning of next year, and that's assuming there are no snags, which something as complicated this may have. We are also disappointed that the disability community is not included in the software selection process. We think we would have better results for all of us if that was done. I'm requesting your oversight with the improved software changes to see if we can get this moving along a lot better. Also, to encourage Metro to include the disability community in this—
One minute.
—in the software selection system. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Elton Thomas.
Good morning, and thank you for letting us come here and speak today. My name is Elton Thomas. I identify as having a disability and Japanese-American. I serve as Vice President of the Board of Directors of ParaQuad, and I work as a Quality Systems Manager at The Lighthouse for the Blind. And over the years, I've witnessed hardships due to public transportation, particularly Call-A-Ride. I put them in two categories, financial hardships and life hardships. At The Lighthouse, I've had coworkers, because I was also involved in the public policy, they've asked me to advocate for them on the financial hardships of being brought to work late and leaving work early, and that really impacts their paychecks. It's still happening today, even though we're seeing improvements. Some of my coworkers mentioned and explained it as they're desperate. They need their full paycheck, they need to get to work and work their full shift. And then, on the other side, there's the life hardships. That's not being able to make it to doctor's appointments, to family events, to funerals, to weddings. And denials are still high, and I cringe when I receive denials, no matter if they're 100 or 5,000. I cringe, because in those denials are these hardships, their life events being missed, doctor's appointments, not getting to work on time. And I just want to raise that awareness to you all. On the good side of things is that there are improvements. I had a good chance to work with Tracy Bauer, who was promoted, and Cynthia Scott, the new General Manager. And there's a lot of hopes, particularly in bringing back the proofing element. And proofing is where you have a human—
One minute.
Yeah. Proofing is when you have the human, like, look at the routes and fix them, and that's always going to be something that Metro's going to need to do, to have someone there. And that's something that we've been advocating for a long time, and we just can't wait for those denials to get down to zero. And when it does, I think we should have a celebration. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. On behalf of the entire organization, we appreciate everybody coming out tonight and participating, and hopefully, we're going to have more of these conversations in the future and get some direction here where we can all come together. So we appreciate that. And once again, our interpreter is with us in this entire meeting now that's going to be held will be posted up on the website later with everything that's taken place today. So thank you. Yeah. At this time, I want to call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order on Friday, June 21, 2024, at 9:05, if my clock is right. Meyer, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Jackson Jennings. Commissioner Golladay.
Here.
Commissioner Isom.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Calvert.
Present.
We have a quorum, and you can proceed.
Very good. Meyer, would you provide a summary of the written public comments that were received for today's meeting?
Yes, Chair. We received five public comments for today's meeting. Those comments have been distributed to the Board as well as staff. They are also included in the online materials and will be included in today's minutes.
Very good. Thank you. The minutes from the April 19, 2024 Board of Commissioners, open meeting have been provided for review by the Board. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, signal five, a saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Any abstentions? One abstention by Commissioner Isom and Mr. Calvert.
Yeah.
Duly noted. Moving on, Mr. Roach, you have any comments?
I do. Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to thank our partners in the disabled community for— I apologize.
With two of our Missouri Commissioners abstaining from that vote, the motion does not pass.
Oh, on the minutes.
I will withdraw my abstention and my exercise in faith and trust in my partners.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion passed.
Appreciate that. Mr. Roach.
Thank you, sir. Yes, so I want to take this time, actually, to introduce the new Commissioners, one of which so generously—
Saved us.
Saved us with his faith in our process. Mr. Winston Calvert. Winston, you and I have worked for many years on providing quality service to the public, and I know your commitment to do so is similar to mine, and really do appreciate you coming onboard, and thank you for your attendance this morning. Dan, you and I, we go way back in this town, but you also are a champion of public service, and your professionalism and resume, I think, will add quite a bit to this organization. I really want to also convey my appreciation for you on this Board of Commissioners. So I want to go with that. Also, want to also, again, thank our partners with the disabled community for their comments today. I've taken notes, as I often do. And I want to talk a little bit about that communication and open dialogue issue and how important that is to us. Quite frankly, in running an organization like this, a lot of times, you can become you can miss some of the things that are very right in front of you. And sometimes, hearing the perspective of our customers is unique and important. And so therefore, I want to stress the value of that comment and the value of the Community Connect events, that we've seen some things that we made some assumptions on that were then proven to not be true, or that we work together on a system that can be true. One very important stat that I want to convey to the Commissioners and, of course, to the community is, we often do a survey of what our customers are—why they are taking transit. In the regular transit system, nearly 81% of our systems—so in Metro Bus and MetroLink —are taking the transit to either school or work. There's no question that most of the people on the regular system are taking it to school and work. But when you move to paratransit, those dynamics change actually quite a bit. 64% of our paratransit customers are actually taking it to healthcare appointments. And the reason why I want to point that out is the absolute vital aspect, indeed, to health, and JMo mentioned it in her comments, about the health and livelihood of this part of our community, and how value-laden paratransit service is. I just want to bring that to everybody's attention and how serious we take that obligation in balancing our system appropriately. So thank you again for your comments. I really enjoyed hearing them, including critiques. Criticisms help us get better. It really does. So I have no problem with them and happy to take them. You'll see on the agenda, a lot of great improvements to Downtown Airport that are on the consent agenda. I'm happy to report that all of the infrastructure required under the 10-year Gulfstream lease have been completed, and now we're moving to the next phase of several of those. Mary Lammy and her staff have been instrumental at getting those done. That is on consent agenda and deserves celebration. We also have the completed SCC TD agreements. They're the first of three agreements from our funding partners. St. Clair County is the first out of the door. They are a fabulous partner, fabulous partner in serving the public with transit in St. Clair County, and very happy to have that on the consent agenda. But I also want to mention that, believe it or not, folks, we celebrated in conjunction with Citizens for Modern Transit, who is our local advocacy group for transit, a 40-year anniversary, which I think is extraordinary. One of the important part of running an agency like this is that we have many partners, including the paratransit partners, but also partners who are interested in improving our region, improving our region through better service and through better infrastructure. So I'm very excited about all of those aspects. And please, I really appreciate everybody's patience with our technology challenges. Very happy to have the interpreter onboard. Thank you. We need you, ma'am, so thank you for your great work. And I apologize for the delay. Personally, we will look into it and see that we can continue to get better. Chairman, thank you.
Fine. Thank you. Moving on, reporter, the Operations Committee. Commissioner Golladay will provide a report.
Yes. A virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on May 23, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the meeting materials for today under Item 6. The Operations Committee is recommending approval of seven items, which are noted on today's agenda as Consent Item Number 10. The items are as follows. On-call GEC Services for Communication Systems Engineering Services, Resolution 1344. MetroLink Station Secure Platform Design, Resolution 1345. Intergovernmental Agreement with IDOT, an agreement for the Curtis Steinberg Road Rehabilitation Project, Resolution 1346. Intergovernmental Agreement with IDOT, Agreement for Taxiway Bravo Final Design, Resolution 1347. Intergovernmental Agreement with IDOT, Agreement for Wetland Relocation and Drainage Improvement, Resolution 1348. Intergovernmental Agreement with IDOT, Agreement for Terminal Final Design, 1349. Intergovernmental Agreement with IDOT, Agreement for Airport Layout Plan, Resolution 1350. That was tough to say. In addition, at the committee meeting, an operations report and workforce update was provided by Chuck Stewart, Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer for Metro Transit. This concludes my report for the Operations Committee.
Fine. Thank you. Moving on, reporter, the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee. Commissioner Beach, will you have a report?
Yes, thank you. A virtual meeting of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee was held on May 23 following the Operations Committee meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your meeting materials today under Item 7. The AFA Committee is recommending approval of two items, which are noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda, Item 10. They are Item H, Contract Modification for Union Mutual Voluntary Employee Benefits, One-Year Rate Extension, that's Resolution 1351. Item I, St. Clair County Operating Agreements, that's Resolution 1352. In addition, at the May meeting, several informational items were also presented, including the Follow-Up Summary Third Quarter, Internal Audit Department, the status report from them for the third quarter, and also from the Internal Audit Department, the State Safety Oversight Status Report for the first quarter of the— Status Report for the first quarter of the calendar year. Also, financial statements, the Treasurers' Report, the Treasury Safekeeping Report, and the Procurement Report. And this concludes my report of the AFA Committee. Mr. Chairman.
Fine. Thank you, Commissioner Beach. I appreciate the report. Moving on, the report of the Safety and Security Committee. I will give that report. Virtual meeting of the Safety and Security Committee was held on May 9th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the meeting materials today under Item Number 8. At that meeting, Kevin Scott, the General Manager of Security, provided an update regarding the safe platform project. And Melissa Webb, Director of Security Media and Custom Engagement, provided an update pertaining to communications. An executive session was not held on May 9th. This concludes my report of the Safety and Security Committee. At this time, if there are no adjustments to the consent agenda, is hearing any? Anything needs to be adjusted to that? Since you read all of that, I appreciate that. So, it keeps me from having to do that, Items A through I. No hearing, no adjustments to be made, moving on. If there's no adjustments to the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as referenced in the committee reports and as outlined on the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, right?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Okay. Approval of the Officers of 2024 to 2025 Board of Commissioners. A virtual meeting of the Nominating Committee was held on June 12th, 2024, at 1 p.m. The draft minutes of that meeting have been included in the board packet under Item Number 11. At that meeting, the committee voted to accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners for approval the following slate of officers for 2024 to 2025, whose positions will take effect at the adjournment of today's meeting. The proposed state slate of officers is as follows. Commissioner Sam Gladney of Missouri, to be Chairman. Commissioner Terry Beach of Illinois, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Herb Simmons of Illinois, Treasurer. And Commissioner Andre Jackson Jennings, Missouri, as Secretary. Is there any questions on those slate of officers? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve those slate of officers.
So moved.
I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you and congratulations. Sam, it's been a real pleasure, believe me. Sam and I have got to be real good buddies over the last couple of years and with Mr. Roach's guidance, so we appreciate that. Unscheduled business, Mr. Roach, is there any?
Chairman, I have none.
Okay. Operations Report, Chuck Stewart.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Good morning. Morning Commissioners, good morning guests. Thank you very much for being here today. I'm going to take a different approach to my report today. I'm going to do it in a series of announcements and kind of fill in, can you hear me?
No, I think you're, I don't know if it's on or not. There you go. Try it now.
If we get it closer to you.
Okay.
Chuck.
The red is on.
Red is on.
Is that better?
That's a lot better.
Are we getting there?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So, I've got a couple, start with a couple of announcements. One is our Gateway Go Summer Youth Pass. All right. There we go.
There.
All right. Couple of announcements. One is our Gateway Go Summer Youth Pass. This is a pass for our young residents of the area, 13 to 25 years of age. It is a three-month pass and it's $80 for this three months. So, that is encouraging our youth in the community, whether they have jobs or other summer activities, have the ability to get around on our system. I was yesterday, part of an announcement of the E-pop-up library. This is a collaboration between.
Switch out there.
All right. Thank you. So, the E-pop-up library is a collaboration between BSD, Schnucks, the airport, and St. Louis County. And what we're doing there, there are QR codes. You'll find them at our Bi-State facilities and Schnucks and various other places. And you hit that code and you're able to download eBooks. No library card required. So, basically, for us, write and read and learn. So, that is our, that is our statement on that. What we were earlier talking about, Community Connect, that will continue. Our next phase of Community Connect will be in August. And you can get details on that at metrostlouis.org/Connect. And last but not least, in terms of announcements, I want to announce that our ADA Compliance Report with the ADA Guru is now available online at metrostlouis.org/ADAmeetings. So, we have decided to release that report in an effort to be fully transparent about what we are doing at Colorado Ride, what our deficiencies are, and progress that we'll make going forward in correcting those deficiencies. We are announcing it, we actually implemented a service change on June 17th, so that was last Monday. You know, we do service changes every quarter. Because of our success in recruiting and retaining operators, these service changes that we've been doing recently are focused on adding frequency to our system and adding reliability. And we did a special change in January because of the recruitment success we had in November and December. This, again, will be a significant change. We're increasing frequency on 15 routes and we're actually adding back evenings on four routes in North County, which will also impact our Colorado Ride service as well. Colorado Ride will have to do their part as it relates to that. So, we're really, really pleased to be able to move forward as it relates to providing reliable and frequent service. Terms of our staffing, I've got about 650 bus drivers right now and we got probably another 50 to 70 in the hopper. So, I'm really pleased about that. I got 143 Colorado Ride operators. That's about 25, 30 more than we had at the beginning of this year. We're on schedule, well, I got two more days or three more days, whatever, to do 150 by the end of June, and I think we'll make that. Our goal for November is 170. So, as we do that again, our objective is frequency, reliability, getting more runs out, being less denials, that type of thing. So, let's, a little bit more on Colorado Ride. We will be implementing the change to the reservation window on July 5th. We will be adjusting to a three-day reservation window. Currently, we have three day on most days. On Fridays, we have five days. And what we're trying to do, we did the, we did the survey in April and it was loud and clear that the community did not want next-day service one day. So, we're, this is kind of a compromise. Our objective here is the longer, the further out it seems that we allow bookings of rides, the more cancellations we get. And we don't have the flexibility, the robust system that we need to make up for those gaps, so that, so this is an opportunity to not only to alleviate some of the call volume that we get on Fridays for this five-day service, but also to hopefully eliminate some of the cancellations that we get as a result of the five-day reservations. So, that's implemented on July 5th. There were comments about other concerns about Colorado Ride, other things that we need to improve. We've announced a new leadership team over there. They're focusing on the attraction and retention of operators. They're focusing on customer service. They're focusing on technology and innovation. And based on some of the comments that I heard this morning, I need to put a little more focus on maintenance of my vans. So, we will be doing that as well. In terms of denials, in terms of providing rides, at this point, in May, we were providing, near the end of, well, in June, last week, we provided over 7,000 rides in one week. So, compared to 14 months ago, it was like 5,000. So, we're providing more rides. There's no doubt about it. 14 months ago, my denial rate was in the neighborhood of 40%. We're in single digits with denial rates, single digits. A couple of weeks ago, it was 8%. Last week, it was actually about 2%. But no denials are acceptable. And we are pushing toward that zero denial so that we can provide much better service. There was discussion of the phone system. We implemented a new phone system at the end of May. We're still having a few issues with that. So, we continue to tweak that. There was a little disruption this morning, which we're taking care of. But hopefully, and this is a Friday, so this is when we get the highest call volume. So, hopefully, with the improvements in the phone system and the changes to the three-day reservation, that will help us to kind of alleviate that problem. And the other situation is the reservation and dispatching software. I think the bids have been received. We are currently analyzing that. We will be making it public as to the types of, we are hearing the types of features that the public would like to have in those systems. So, we will be transparent about what we're looking at and the features that they have as we start implementing, we decide on a vendor. We'll be, we'll use our ADA community to start testing some of those things for us. So, we're looking forward to improving that relationship as well as we move forward with these new innovations. So, that concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Stewart?
Comment, I guess. Tell if this thing is on. It's on. Okay. I just want to thank Chuck again and your team for your work on this. I know I've done that in previous meetings and I wanted to say it again. You know, we're not there yet, but I think you all have done a tremendous job. Hearing 143 Colorado Ride operators with a goal of 170 is great news. I was going to ask about the phones, but it sounds like you're already on that.
We're on that, yes.
It's, you know, but understand there are always things to work through. So, thank you and your entire team for the work you're doing on that and thanks for keeping your heads down and working.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'd like to echo Sam's comments. The only thing I would ask, and I know anytime that we're updating systems, like the phone systems and the software, there's always going to be glitches. I think we all deal with that. But some of the things that I think that we need immediate attention on is what I heard this morning is the maintenance of some vehicles. Those are, those are things that has to be done right away because it's definitely a concern for not only our riders, but our operators. So, things that we can immediately get taken care of, I would like to have that addressed right away. So, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on, Meyer, would you call future dates, please, for the meetings?
Yes. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, August 1st, at 8:30. The next Operations Committee, as well as Audit Finance and Administration Committee meetings, will be held on Friday, August 16th, at 8:30. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, September 20th, starting at 8:30.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion that the Board go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under Bi-State Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080, D1 Legal, D2 Real Estate, and D10 Auditors. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Golladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvert.
Yes.
Commissioner Isom.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you.